Good evening. I call the regular Borough Council meeting of April 26, 2021 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Hope News Tribune of January 13, 2021, according to the Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Due to COVID-19, this meeting is being held by means of the use of electronic communications equipment via online video conference provided by zoom.us. May I have a roll call, please?
Council President Farkas?
Here.
Councilman Legati?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
And Councilman Zambrana?
Here.
Well, President.
Thank you. Now we'll have a moment of silence followed by a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from April 12, 2021. Any comments or corrections? Okay, then we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
Motion that the minutes be approved is tight.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Legati, second by Councilwoman Newbauer, all opposed. I mean, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the bills and claims. Will the clerk please read by title only the Bill Resolution 115-2021?
Resolution 115, 2021 is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount $5,910,452.47.
You've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Would that the resolution be adopted?
Second.
I have a motion by Council President Farkas, a second by Councilman Peretti. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll have comments from the audience on resolutions. Comments from the audience on consent resolutions 116, 2021 through 122, 2021. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the consent agenda.
I think we have everybody on the screen tonight. I don't see anyone wishing to speak.
Okay. Seeing none, we will close audience comments and move on to the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and having been reviewed by the Borough Council will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items require expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Does anyone want to pull any resolutions through the consent agendas? Seeing no request to pull any resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the borough clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the borough clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the borough clerk.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Legati, second by Councilman Zambrana. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
And this will be to approve resolutions 116 through 122. Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Legati?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we have the introduction of the budget. I'd like to introduce our BA CFO, Jeanette Larison, for a presentation on the budget. I see it on the screen, thanks, Jeanette.
Okay, unmute myself, so good evening, everybody. Yes, so we have the 2021 budget for introduction tonight. This budget was put together with the cooperation and the many meetings of the finance committee and with the assistance of all of the borough departments. So on our finance committee, we have Councilman Phil Zambrana, who is the chair, Council President Randy Farkas, and Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell. So between all of us, we worked very hard to put together a budget that would be, you know, with coming off of COVID, although we still are in COVID, some of our budgeting processes or thoughts have changed since last year. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is basically some of the things that we did accomplish last year in the midst of the pandemic. So, you know, we had some restructuring of borough offices, which included the zoning and code enforcement. So we had a full-time employee that we changed those functions. We split them between construction and a part-time zoning officer. I think that it's working out well. We seem to be doing more with less, and so I'm happy to report on that. We've also had a restructuring of our utility department to enable us to provide better services for our utilities. Again, this may not have necessarily been a money-saving venture, but it certainly has improved the function of the department and improved on the services that we are providing. We had a consolidation of the planning and zoning board with, thanks to Borough Clerk Mimi Marler, acting as our, not acting, but actually performing as our secretary to this board. I know that things are ramping up, but it certainly seems to be functioning more efficiently and effectively than when we had two boards in place. We've also had a move to the new building, which was much anticipated. We've moved the construction office, zoning, DPW, and utility maintenance departments over to the new building. I believe all of that is working out pretty well. We've had some changes in the Borough Hall itself, where we moved some offices around to make things more efficient for when the public comes in. Everything is kind of all located in the central hallway of the building. And again, I think that those changes improve on the services we can provide as people, residents, and non-residents alike visit the building, that it makes it easier for them to visit the offices that they need to. We were able to do some major upgrades to our phone system and our IT infrastructure and security. So even in the midst of the pandemic, where maybe recreation and the pool and some other things had to sit by the sidelines, we were still able to move forward and, you know, continue working to serve the public and provide, you know, improvements to our services. So that's what happened.
Not to interrupt there, but you might want to advance the slide, because I think you had that on a slide and you're still on the intro. Right, so that was the year in review is on a slide?
Yep.
We can't, no, we can't see that. We see budget presentation.
Let me just, let me try again, because it was showing that online, so I apologize for that.
There you go, now we can see it.
You can see that?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you see me change the slide now?
No.
No. Okay, so what the heck is going on? I apologize.
You have to change it to like, presentation mode or something?
No, I did, I did that. It's not changing on your side?
No.
Nope.
Okay. I'm sharing the screen that it's, that it's saying, you are sharing this screen.
All right, try and hit slide three now.
Okay. Now, let me.
Jeanette, from the beginning, on the left-hand side, start all over. From the beginning, top left.
Yeah, I mean, I hit that.
You're probably on a different screen.
Okay.
If you got the black screen with the three different squares.
Yeah, that's not, that's my screen, that's not the preview screen.
On that screen, there's a setting that says switch.
Okay, I've never had a problem with this. I teach online, I've never had a problem where it wouldn't show up, I don't understand. Okay.
Yeah, that black screen there. It's on the top, it says switch.
Yeah. So it says you are sharing this screen, which is the screen that I have for my presentation.
That's what we see. So try, just try and click through the slides.
I am, I'm switching the slides, and I can see the slides changing, but you can't see them.
Jeanette, go to your bottom where you have your PowerPoint.
Okay.
There we can see the three screens again. Go to the bottom. The little icon on the bottom. You were just there when you were picking a screen, and we saw all three of your screens there. You're not there. The bottom tray.
Yeah, I'm at the bottom.
I don't see your mouse moving there, you were just there a second ago.
Okay.
Maybe, Jeanette, you could always present without doing the presentation mode, just click through the slides manually.
I can hear you.
I was saying, Jeanette, you could just click through the slides manually, not in presentation mode, and share that same screen. Visually, it doesn't subtract from the content, so.
Right.
Yeah, I just, all right. Let me go back here, let me go back to share. Are you seeing the year in review?
No, we're seeing 2021 municipal budget.
Yeah, but underneath, what does it say underneath? It's still the main view, okay, all right.
Slide one, right.
If I moved it, can you see it?
Nope.
No, so this is not sharing, it's not sharing the, it's not sharing the screen that it said it, which, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Why this is a problem. Okay.
Just.
All right, so, okay, so we, you can see me change it there, right?
You're all good, yeah.
Okay, I got you. Okay, so to continue on, so we talked, you know, I spoke about the year in review, and so we have some objectives with this budget for 2021, and they focus mostly around the funding for capital improvements. We have the road program with the Department of Transportation grants underway. We're looking to do some milling and paving partnership with the county. There's some improvements to some public buildings that are under review for approval for a couple of the buildings in town, such as the senior center and the library. There are some parks and playgrounds improvements that I know that the rec committee has been looking into, see, you know, provided a list of improvements that we should undertake. We also have some improvements that need to be done at the pool and with the utilities as we look into opportunities for smart metering and some infrastructure upgrades. So those are the objectives that we are trying to hit with the current budget, along with the operations, the daily operations that we normally undertake with the budget. So where do your taxes go? So when we look at your total tax rate, it's made up of several components, several taxing entities, which would be the county and the schools, and then, of course, the library, and then our local tax. So the Board of Education, it's about 61.7% of your tax dollar. The local tax is about 23.7%. The library is about one, a little over 1%. And then the county and the county open space make up the remainder of your tax dollar.
Jeanette, can I just interrupt for one second? Can you go back to that screen?
Sure.
Just, I just want to reinforce to everyone in the public, the Borough of Milltown, 23.7%, that is what we are talking about tonight. We have no control over the other three quarters of the budget. We are, we can only control, you know, work with what we can control, and that's the municipal portion of the budget. Just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Thank you, Randy.
In terms of our operating budget, so that budget is comprised of different components, so you have your salaries and wages, your other expenses, any contractual obligations that we have. We, of course, then have the utility budgets, the, rather, the utilities, electric, gas, and all of that, and then our statutory expenses, which would be our pension obligations, our social security and FICA taxes. And then the revenues are comprised of any fees, fines, or grants that we collect every year, of course, the amount that's raised through taxation, and then any state aid and energy receipts tax. So basically, in municipal budgeting, the appropriation side and the revenue side has to equal. And so what makes up the difference between the monies we collect through fees, fines, and grants, and then state aid and energy receipts would be your amounts raised through taxation. So of course, all of these monies are used to provide the services to the community, and those services will include police protection, garbage collection, any storm cleanup, snow removal, your parks and recreation, code enforcement, building inspections, court services, all of these services that are provided to the community. We also make contributions to the volunteer groups, such as the fire department and the emergency service responders. And then, of course, within the, within your tax rate is the public library, so that's funded through a separate tax rate, but it is part of our overall budget. And so when we look at how some of these things are allocated throughout the budget, you can see through this chart what portion is salaries and wages and what portion is other expenses, because the salaries and wages, you know, the other expenses are the actual costs of the services that we're providing. So in this budget, we have our salaries at about 38% and the other expenses at 28%. Debt service at this point is about 11% of our overall budget. We also have a, what's called a reserve for uncollected taxes. Now, what this amount, this is a non-spending budget appropriation. So basically, every year, when we collect the tax money, we are required to pay the school and the county their taxes 100%, regardless of whether the town collects 100% or not. And so this reserve for uncollected taxes is actually an amount that gets put into the budget so that we're not left short when we're paying those other entities 100%, and we're only collecting somewhere between 97% and 98% of the overall taxes that are billed. So, you know, sometimes what happens, not So, you know, sometimes what happens, not sometimes, always, the lower the, the percent of collections, it negatively impacts the amount that has to be raised for taxes in the following year, because we have to make up for that difference. So unfortunately, um, it's a necessary evil, and that number, if you look at the budget document, um, overall, has been ticking up, um, over the years, because the, because of, first of all, the amount of taxes that are charged. So whether through the school, whoever, you know, as taxes increase, and then the percentage of collections. And with COVID, um, it, it has put a damper on some of the collections overall, utilities and taxes alike. So this is, um, just to, just to give you an idea of the breakdown of how it's allocated, uh, within the budget itself. What some of those appropriations look like, so the chart that you see right now is a comparison over what was budgeted last year versus what is budgeted this year. So, um, eh, some things have stayed the same. Um, medical benefits, actually, the cost has gone down slightly. Um, our liability insurance has also gone down slightly. Um, some statutory and deferred charges that, um, they have also been reduced. Our pension costs have gone up slightly. We have no control over that. We get that bill from, um, the state each year, and, um, we're bound by whatever they tell us we need to pay. Our debt service, so we're trying to maintain those numbers, um, overall. We actually did have a slight, um, decrease in the interest, but you'll notice that the principal payments went up by almost the same amount, because we would like to keep the amount we pay for debt service, um, flat. Um, the other debt service that we're speaking of, that has, is, uh, uh, that particular loan has this, uh, same payment every year over a long period of time. The library is, uh, those costs are derived by one-third of the mill. So that, their, um, collections have actually been reduced slightly, um, and that's in conjunction with assessed valuations in town. Our recycling costs, so this is the biggest, one of the biggest things that we have zero control over. We have a contract with the county. It's not the county's fault. We actually are getting a deal by, by partnering with them. But the cost of recycling has, um, over the last several years is almost tripled, really, because there has been, uh, it's difficult to, uh, for the entity, for the, anyone to utilize or get rid of the recycled materials, and the cost of the, of the recycling itself, um, is being transferred, you know, to the end user. So those costs have gone up dramatically. Utilities have stayed the same. Our contributions to, um, the volunteer services has virtually stayed the same. And, uh, the dollar amounts listed also include the amount for low staff, which, which is the length of service, um, payments that we make, uh, annually for the volunteers. You can see that the amount that we are anticipating in grants has ticked up, uh, a little bit, which is always nice, right? So we want to try to benefit as much as we can from grant monies, and, um, the borough certainly, uh, does the best that we can to, uh, maximize those revenues. And then, um, so overall, uh, we have a modest, um, increase in the, in the overall, um, budget. And, um, that doesn't necessarily translate to the amount to be raised by tax, taxation. Um, so we'll talk about that, um, as we go through. Um, this is basically an increase in the appropriation side. And remember that last year, when we introduced our budget, we slashed a lot of the appropriations based on what we felt the services were going to be. So the pool was not really a part of this budget, and recreation had been slashed dramatically. So that's why, um, when you look at the total of the increase in the appropriations, it's much larger than you would ordinarily see. It's only because we've added those services back into the budget. But it doesn't, it doesn't translate into that much of a tax increase.
Oh, Jeanette, excuse me, excuse me one second.
Sure.
Could you just go back to that screen again?
Sure.
Um, just because I think it's very important for the residents to understand, the, uh, state and federal grants, um, if you, if you look at, if you look at that, that's an increase of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in, in state and federal grants. Now, as we, as we all know, and, you know, certainly in the prior administration, there were certain individuals who talked about grants and about getting grants, but they never materialized. Everyone take a good look at that, at that number, a hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars, in addition to last year. So we are almost a three quarter, uh, three quarters of a million dollars in state and federal grants. Um, that is a credit to every member of this council and the mayor, and Jeanette, and also Jeanette and the entire staff, to go out and look for grants, and there, there you see it, ladies and gentlemen, three quarters of a million dollars.
Thank you. Our, uh, revenues, again, you're gonna see some, uh, dramatic changes there. Again, this is what we're anticipating. Um, last year's budget, as you can see, when we are talking about things that were cut out of the budget, well, the pool revenue was cut out of last year's budget. Um, we had drastic changes to, uh, the after-school childcare program. Um, so, and also, um, trying to look and we see what else took a little bit of a hit. The court fees, uh, took a hit. So, um, last year we anticipated more, but we actually realized less, and therefore we reduced the amount that we're going to anticipate for this year. But all in all, um, we were able to, um, make all of this work. And I'd like to point out, um, when we talk about the, uh, local tax or the, you know, what translates to what the actual taxes that we need to collect, um, when we, uh, from the taxpayers. So we're looking at, last year we had a, a local tax of six, uh, mil-, uh, six point six eight four, uh, million. This year we're at six point, I'm, I'm sorry, six point six eight four. This year we're looking at six point eight oh four, or about one point seven five percent increase. The maximum allowable, without any, um, exceptions, is two percent. So this actual one point seven five percent increase is very modest. It's going to translate to about forty-one dollars and fifty cents per average assessed property owner. That average assessment is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred eleven dollars. Um, of course, when I say this, it is, this is directly related to the local tax. It, this is not related to school or county taxes, because, um, depending on their actual increases will also in, affect the overall tax bill. When, when we present our budget, we are simply talking about the municipal portion of that tax. Um, and so that, that basically covers the operating budget. Um, the other two components of the budget are, are utilities. So the water and sewer utility budget, so we have a total budget of just under four million dollars. This is a self-liquidating budget, which means that when, um, it's self-supported. Um, the revenues that support this budget are simply the water and sewer rents, which would be the fees that we, uh, charge for usage, and then any water and sewer connection fees. The operations of the budget or the appropriations are to cover general expenses, all the employees, not just the, um, maintenance side of it, but also the clerical staff that, um, you know, handles the billing, your meter readers, um, any licensed operator services, these are all required by law. Um, any debt service, and then, of course, the water and sewer purchases, which we currently, uh, do through the city of New Brunswick. So, um, this oper- this budget is, uh, presented without any, um, fee, uh, without any, um, rate increases. Uh, it also, um, incorporates a lot of, uh, upgrades and improvements that, um, are, have been currently underway with the pump stations. Um, so, um, again, this was another, um, budget that we poured over with the department and tried to put it together in a, uh, so that we could get these improvements done, have your daily operations uninterrupted, and have, um, no increase, um, for the actual rents or the rates. The other utility is our electric utility. And again, this is a self-supporting, um, utility. This budget is about, um, a little under seven point three million dollars. The operations, uh, budget or the appropriations are for the same types of general expenses, employees, any, uh, debt service that's associated with this utility, and then your bulk energy pur- purchases, um, from, uh, the different entities that we purchase the energy from, and then resell it, uh, to the public. One of the things I wanted to point out, um, that I overlooked about the, um, general budget is that, um, you know, we have a reliance on the, uh, surplus that we use from the electric utility, um, and we are trying to reduce the amount of that reliance. And so this year, uh, when I look at the revenues and I look at this surplus number, um, we've, you know, reduced it, uh, substantially over last year. And we hope to continue with that trend going forward, to, um, you know, continue to reduce it, even if it's just a little bit every year, so that we are less reliant on that surplus number.
That's a great start.
We gotta, you know, one step at a time, we'll get there. And then finally, so just a general, just a, in summary, you know, our operating budget, the ta- again, the tax increase is about one point seven five percent over last year, or about forty-one dollars and fifty cents per average assessed property. There are no reductions in, uh, municipal services. Uh, we didn't have to do any of that to achieve this. We simply are continuing to restructure, uh, services and, uh, borough departments to have them work more efficiently. So you're essentially doing, um, more with less, you know? Um, and then, um, we're looking to increase the, uh, infrastructure improvements along the way. Both utilities, you know, will enjoy no rate increases this year, um, along with no reduction in services. But again, with, um, I would like to say with increases in, um, infrastructure improvements. So we have water lining projects underway that was funded, uh, one hundred percent through a grant. We have other pump station services. We're looking to do some utility infrastructure work. Um, all of this will be achieved through a capital budget, but ultimately no increase in the overall taxation of the borough. And that concludes my very sloppy report. I'm s- I'm sorry that we got off to a messy start, but that concludes my presentation for the budget.
Thank you so much. I mean, I really appreciate you e- explaining that, and if any members of the council have, uh, any questions or comments, they can certainly chime in. But I just wanted to say that, uh, thank you for all the time and effort that you've put in, as well as the Finance Committee, Councilman Zambrana, Farkas, and O'Donnell, as well as really all the council members, because they all work with their departments, and to all of the employees of the department too. It's truly a, uh, a team effort to put this together, and, um, you know, I, I thank you all for your time and attention getting this done in a timely manner, and, um, you know, doing the hard work, especially, um, you know, through COVID where things were, uh, challenging at best to, uh, to see this budget come together is a, is a good thing. So does anybody else have any comments, questions?
Um, Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of just general comments.
Okay.
So the, the key to the entire, uh, budget preparation, uh, was the fact that the kickoff began in the fall of twenty twenty. Um, our, our BACFO, Jeanette, um, communicated out to all the folks in the borough, uh, what the deadlines were going to be in advance, well in advance, um, to make sure that, uh, when the beginning of the year rolled around, that we were off to a good start. And, uh, then after that, it was meeting with the different, uh, departments, getting their take. Um, some of these meetings weren't in person, socially distanced. Some of these meetings were virtual. Um, but, but it resulted in a more efficient use, um, like Jeanette said, of our borough assets and our personnel. Um, so I'd, I'd like to, uh, again, just, it's wonderful. Um, I believe, unless I'm mistaken, I don't believe that, uh, this has been the earliest that a budget may have been presented in the last few years. Um, I always actually, um, would, would, would compare against how quickly, uh, the school board would put together their presentation. And so, um, this year, we've actually beat the school board. Uh, um, they haven't presented theirs, and they won't present it until next week. So again, uh, uh, great, um, thanks so much to Jeanette and for the entire, uh, Finance Administration and Planning Committee. Um, hopefully we'll be even, uh, do this faster next year.
If I can just make one more comment, that, um, as, um, after, um, assuming that after the vote occurs, that copies of the introduced budget will be available at the clerk's office or online, and that, um, a public hearing would occur, um, on, at, on May twenty-fourth. Um, via Zoom.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Okay.
Just real quick, Madam Mayor. I would just like to thank Jeanette. Jeanette did a fantastic job. Um, that's, we're, we're spoiled because she does a fantastic job in everything she does. Um, in the context of this, uh, budget, uh, Councilman Zambrana did a, did an excellent job, two years in a row. Uh, we thought we were doing good at sixty-six dollars, uh, last year, and, uh, look, look what happens, forty-one dollars and fifty cents for the average assessed one. Uh, that's a credit to all the, the, the entire, the mayor and the council, but certainly the people on the, uh, the Finance Committee. Uh, Councilwoman O'Donnell, her first year was excellent in all the meetings. I just want everyone to know, first year asked very intelligent, probing, uh, questions that were, uh, very, very instrumental in coming up with, with this budget. So thanks to Councilwoman O'Donnell as well. Uh, for the first time, in my memory, the Borough of Milltown is living within its means. This is how government's supposed to run. That's it.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I may, um, going through this process, as being part of the Finance Committee in the past, um, I know how much hard work it takes to do all of this. Um, I'd like to also echo the thanks for the, uh, council people, uh, in there, especially, uh, uh, Councilman Zambrana, uh, two years in a row with what he was handed is an, an astonishing accomplishment. Um, not only to him, um, Count, Council President Farkas, Councilwoman O'Donnell, and Jeanette, you know, by all means. Um, you know, I, I just don't want, uh, Jeanette's staff is, is gotta take a little credit here as well. Uh, they are a very, a good group of people that are accommodating and that have bent over backwards where we needed cutting. Uh, I'm sure they, you know, reluctantly, uh, said, you know, I'm gonna do whatever I have to do, and, and it's, and it's because of them that, that we're able to get to this number and the people involved. I'd just like to thank Jeanette and her staff for everything for this year.
For that. They all are team players, and echo your sentiments on that.
Okay, and thank you. So I have in my notes, um, that the budget synopsis will be published in the Home News Tribune on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, right, Mimi?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the public hearing will, and final adoption will be seven PM, uh, at the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting, and full copies are available in the clerk's office. And I'll, uh, wrap up by saying, you know, I, I appreciate it. It seems to me, uh, from all of the, the comments, that, um, the rate, the tax rate payers have been the North Star of everyone that's been working on this to, uh, you know, address their concerns and try and keep the tax rate as low as possible. And I'm really happy to hear how, you know, being more efficient and trying to get, uh, the most quote-unquote bang for your buck that we can, that was addressed a lot in this budget. And, um, so I'm happy, happy to see that, and I hopefully will, will continue that going into the years forward. So, thank you. Okay, so now I will read Resolution one-two-three-A, twenty twenty-one, introduction of the twenty twenty-one budget. There is no public input on introduction. The budget synopsis will be published in the Home News Tribune of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, the public hearing will take place and final adoption will be considered. The budget summary will be posted in the lobby of Borough Hall and on the municipal website. All copies may be obtained at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk, Monday through Friday, not between nine A M. and four P M. up until the date and time of the public hearing. I hope the public, if they wish to, uh, comment, will show up at the twenty-fourth meeting. So now I'll ask for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution one-two-three-A, twenty twenty-one, to introduce the twenty twenty-one budget.
Go Phil.
Go ahead, Phil.
Oh, uh, I'm, I move to, uh, I, I move to accept the introduction of the twenty twenty-one budget.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Zambrana, second by Council President Farkas. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce the budget.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we will have a public hearing for twenty-one dash one-four-nine-seven, an ordinance of the Borough of Milltown in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, providing for a special emergency appropriations of one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents, providing for the funding of a deficit in operations of the borough directly attributable to COVID-nineteen, which is anticipated to be experienced by the borough in the current fiscal year. And since introduction, full copies of ordinance twenty-one dash one-four-nine-seven are presently posted on the borough website on the bulletin board at Borough Hall and are available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of eight-thirty and four-thirty P M. Monday through Friday. Uh, so I'll ask for a motion and a second to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-one dash one-four-nine-seven.
Make a motion. Second.
Who, I, I, who, who made the first motion? I didn't hear.
Randy.
Oh, oh, oh. So I have a motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Lagotti. Um, alright, so now the, uh, the public hearing on ordinance twenty-one fourteen ninety-seven is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak. So please follow the directions of the clerk if you have any comments on this public, uh, ordinance.
I don't see anyone wishing to speak.
Okay. I don't either. So seeing none, I will ask the, uh, council for a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the ordinance twenty-one fourteen ninety-seven.
So moved.
Second. So a motion by Council, yeah, Council President Farkas, second by Councilman Lagotti, the public hearing for ordinance twenty-one fourteen ninety-seven is now closed. So now I'll ask for a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty-one dash one-four-nine-seven.
I make a motion that ordinance, that ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and be a published according to law.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Peretti, second by Councilman Zambrana. Uh, any further questions or comments from the council? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt ordinance fourteen ninety-seven.
Yep. Okay, and now we'll move on to ordinance, uh, the next one. There will be no public input on introduction of ordinance twenty-one dash one-four-nine-eight. The introduction summary will be published in the Home News Tribune on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And second reading, public hearing and final adoption will be considered on May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Full copies of the ord- Is it May tenth? The eleventh, this is two-
No, no, you're right. I'm sorry, May tenth, yeah.
I, that's there. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the borough website, on the bulletin board of the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of nine A four P M. Monday through Friday. Twenty-one dash one-four-nine-eight, calendar year twenty twenty-one, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bang, NJSA forty A dash four, forty-five, fourteen. May I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance twenty-one dash fourteen ninety-eight?
So moved.
Oh, it's an ordinance. Uh, crap, you want me to read this whole thing?
No, you don't have to.
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, published according to law, at a public hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, May tenth, at seven P M. in council chambers or via Zoom conference call.
Thank you, Nick. I, I can't, anyone? And, okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Lagotti, second by Councilwoman Newbauer.
I'm sorry, I think I need to interject.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, so May tenth is the, uh, adoption. I apologize. I'm sorry.
This is, okay. Any comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas.
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer.
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Aye.
Councilman Peretti.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Motion carries to introduce ordinance twenty-one fourteen ninety-eight, and it'll be taken up for final reading of five-ten, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we will move on to our council professional and mayor's reports. We'll start with the Department of Finance, Administration, and Planning, Councilwoman Phil Zambran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just wanted to make a, a few short, uh, statements. Um, uh, one is to thank the members of the revitalization committee, uh, for this past Saturday's, uh, Earth Day cleanup. Um, also, uh, shout out to Cub Scout thirty-three, uh, the organizers, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and their parents and participants. Um, uh, it was a great day to do a cleanup. Um, I would also be remiss in not, uh, uh, offering a shout out to, um, the Maycore Barber Shop, uh, for the previous Saturday cleanup on April seventeenth, which was also, um, uh, co-sponsored by the M E F. Um, it's great when, uh, organizations like this, uh, the volunteer organizations or committees in the, in the town, um, actually come together to do something that's, uh, really rewarding. Um, it's a great show of community. Um, I wanted also to, I, I did chime into the Board of Education meeting earlier tonight. Um, they actually held their first budget meet, uh, Board of Education meeting that was open to the public. Um, even though it was, um, offered virtually, uh, and their budget will be presented next Monday, uh, May third. Um, so the, the other thing I wanted to say about that was that May, May third next Monday is also the first day that all the kids in Milltown go back to school five days a week, uh, which is, which is nice to see. Little by little, everyone's getting back to a little bit of normalcy. Um, again, thanks again to Jeanette, um, for her great help, uh, putting together the budget. And, uh, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to the Department of Public Safety, Councilman Nick Lagotti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As it is the off week, I do not have a report for the police or the fire department. I will have those for everybody at the next council meeting. Uh, just a quick notice that due to scheduling, uh, differences, uh, Business Administrator Jeanette Larson and the Senior Center Director Debbie Cuddy and I are looking forward to having a meeting, uh, very, very soon in the, uh, concept of reopening the senior center. Uh, currently, it is still closed, but, uh, we're gonna be working on getting that opened as soon as possible, and that's gonna happen, I think, uh, uh, very soon. And I'll have a report on that for you at the next meeting as well.
Great. Thank you. All right, next, we will move on to the Department of Utilities, Council President Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, for inspections in the electrical utility.